Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight to celebrate such a joyous time. When we recognize, I believe, seven people tonight for tenure. It's always a great time, it's a very happy time, or it should be a happy time. And I'm not going to spend all the time introducing. We have a few principals that will talk. President of the Board, do you like to say anything? Nope? Then, our Viola Principal, Christine Dress, please come on up.
You said you didn't want to talk and he would say a lot, and he introduced his name? Well, you asked for it. It's a risk, you took it. Hi, good evening, I'm Christine Dress, the Principal of Viola. And I always say at the tenure ceremony, that this is one of the most important jobs a principal could have. Because you are hiring the best teacher that you can find for the job in your building. Because you know they have the greatest impact on your building and the learning that students are going to have every day in your building for six years. The teacher that I'm about to introduce is someone who doesn't just have one classroom, she's in all classrooms. She is throughout the building, all day long, because she is our ENL specialist. And we are so happy to have someone so talented and so adaptable, no matter what grade level she's been in, to whether she's in a self-contained classroom, whether she's in an included room, a regular room, a kindergarten room. It doesn't matter where she is, the support that she gives students is just phenomenal. I will have to say that prior to hiring her, I was given a list of resumes, and Lisa Castaldo-Green gave me a list of demos that we would be doing. And I started to look through them, and I said, "Hmm, let me see." And I look at one of the ones, and I say, "This teacher grew up on the same street that I lived on." And I looked down a little further, and I said, "Oh my goodness, she went to the same college that I went to." And we went to a small college, it's not like we went to a major college or a big university. And if I said it now, most people would say, "What, and where is that?" So we both went to Mount St. Vincent's, which is a very small college in the Bronx. And then, I looked down even further, she was a long-term sub in North Rockland, so was I. She was a long-term sub in South Orange County, so was I. And I said, "Wow, I really have to see this teacher teach." So I always joke her now, that I'm waiting for you to become principal when I leave. So just a little pressure, but not much. Having said that, I did walk around the building, and besides what I see every day, ask teachers and ask students to tell me a little bit about you. And I tried, in the spirit of Lucy Hawkins, to write a poem. So this is really like, my attempt at it, and I may need to go back myself for some more instruction in second grade, because they're working on poetry. So, "Your students will remember and thank you. For every new word your students speak, for every hug and smile they give you, they will remember. For each marvel your students amaze their teachers and parents with, for every act of kindness they share with another, they will remember. For every encouraging and believing in our Viola students, for making each child feel special and cared for, for helping them to love and feel loved, they will remember. For every scary new thing they bravely attempt, for every problem they solve on their own, for every so-called impossible goal they achieve, they will remember. For being an unshakable team with your colleagues when so many challenges are overcome by your unity and your teamwork, for your lessons on perseverance, for teaching students, teachers, parents, and me as an administrator, that together we are stronger than we are alone, we will all remember. Someday when your students walk across the stage to receive their diplomas, when they get their first paycheck, when they go to live on their own, they will remember the path you helped them to create and the support that you gave them to find their way. For as far as they go, and yet will still go, we know how far they have come because of you and your care, and you care about who they are and what they will one day become. They will remember that you helped to make their dreams possible. For your amazing gifts as a teacher, for your gifts of friendship, leadership, and kindness to Viola students, parents, and staff, for the seeds you planted and nourished to grow students' bright futures, we will remember and thank you for your partnership and guidance in the future. We will remember yours is not just a classroom, it's a hope, it's a haven, it's a sanctuary. It's a place where wonders are born and reborn every day, where culture is celebrated and shared. Your support and teaching are not bound by walls, language, or culture. You have helped us to speak the most important language, the language of acceptance and openness that embraces uniqueness and difference. Viola will always remember and embrace the language of learning that makes our world and school a better place where all children achieve and succeed because of you. Your students will always remember and thank you, and we are so happy to have you as part of Viola's family." And so those words were inspired by a book from Teachers Touch Lives, that teachers have signed for you, Amy, if you would come up. And these are all the different things that the students themselves have written from kindergarten to fifth grade, and talk about the hugs and the smiles and the playing the games and all the love you gave for them. So each and every day, so I hope you'll always remember this day and continue all the great work we do at Viola.
Remind me never to follow Christine, because I am not a poet, poet, let's put it that way. But I'm very, very pleased to be here tonight to speak about Danielle Thomas. Danielle, where are you? There she is, right there. So Danielle is here tonight with her husband Steve, her daughter Caroline, who's 11-years-old, and her son Billy, who's 9-years-old. Seen a lot of them online, talk a little bit more about that later. But I'm very pleased to present her to the Board of Education as a candidate for tenure. Danielle is a highly respected and well-thought-of member of our Suffolk Middle School family here. Ever since she got here four years ago, we were able to steal her from Suffolk High School as she came off of leave there. So that was a win for us here, definitely at the middle school. Danielle's background, like myself, a SUNY person, she went to SUNY Plattsburgh, where she got her bachelor's degree, and LAU where she received her master's in adolescent education. But since coming to Suffolk Middle School, Danielle has really distinguished herself as an integral part of our seventh-grade ELA group and our faculty. That's a group here in the school that's led by Mrs. Martin, she gets to work with Mrs. Coffey, Mrs. DiMarsico, Mrs. Johnson. And they are probably one of the most innovative groups of educators you'll ever come across. This is a group of teachers who are constantly seeking new and innovative ways to educate their students. She is, recently, what I've seen in her class, I saw her teaching kids about 20% time, how to do a project where they give 20% of their time in developing projects and things that they give back to the community. I think I've had a flood of students come to my office now asking me what they could do. Some I've had to turn away, they've had some very interesting ideas. But it's really neat to see the kids come up with these things on their own. She's incorporated brain and mindset research into her instruction. All of this inclusive of improving and fostering an environment where students can enhance and grow their literacy skills every single day. One of the things that makes Danielle so great is she's been involved with students here outside the classroom as well. She's given her time to chaperone the seventh-grade Boston trip, the eighth-grade Washington DC trip. She's gotten pied in the face, Youth Against Cancer, along with me, and a bunch of other faculty members. And she's worked on the sixth-grade musical Shrek as well. Part of her success here is definitely a direct result of the positive relationship she builds with students. You walk into her classroom, and you know her students just want to be there. And they want to be there because she's a wonderful teacher, and she provides a positive environment for them. A few things you might want to know about Danielle, not only is she a great school mom for her students here, but she, quote, not my word, she considers herself a soccer mom. Her daughter plays elite soccer, her son participates in everything ranging from little league baseball to theater to creating his own YouTube empire. You'll have to check that out at some point. And fascinatingly enough, we've had some discussions about what Danielle did prior to becoming an educator. She was a museum manager extraordinaire. She served as the Director of Museum Services at the Intrepid Aerospace Museum, the Museum of Modern Art, and the Guggenheim. So there's a wide range of things that Danielle can certainly do and bring to the job here. All of us here know her love for reading and cooking, but I also know if we need a good recommendation for a nice bottle of wine, or good food and wine pairing, sorry kids, I thought sometimes I'd go to wine at dinner. I go to Danielle, I know she probably gets most of that from her husband, but I give her credit for it, too. All kidding aside, we're really privileged to have Danielle as a teacher here at Suffolk Middle School. There are some people that you know are just naturals at the job and who grow as professionals in the job every single day. And it takes a special person, honestly, I've been in high school and middle school, I loved high school, I loved middle school, but it takes a special person to teach the middle level, it really does. And I'm biased, so forgive me. Danielle will frequently stop by my office to tell me if this is the best job she's ever had. In addition, her exact quote to me is, "I'm never retiring." So if that's the case, our school and our district will be better for it for many years to come. So Danielle, come on. Don't forget where it all started, Danielle. I think her. Before I begin, I'd certainly like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Adams, for your continued support of our staff, our students in Suffolk High School. I'm honored tonight to introduce you to three wonderful staff members who will be receiving tenure, hopefully, this evening. First, I'd like to call up Danielle Ross. And I do it a little different, you have to stand here while I talk about you. Come on up, Danielle, so we can see you. It's my honor this evening to introduce Ms. Danielle Ross from Suffolk High School, the Art Department. Danielle attained her Associate's Degree in Fine Art from Rockland Community College, her Bachelor's Degree in Fabric and Textile Design from FIT, and her Master's Degree in Art Education from Manhattanville College. Danielle's first experience at Suffolk High School was many years ago, as a lead replacement where she did an outstanding job. And fast forward a few years, and another opportunity presented itself, and Danielle came right back to us from North Rockland where she was teaching for five years. Very thankfully. Over the past two years, Danielle has demonstrated her passion and desire to be part of our school community through her work with students of Suffolk High School. She currently teaches fashion, drawing, and sort of art. And also took on the immense, and I underscore immense, responsibility of becoming our new yearbook advisor this year with no pressure. I should also throw into the mix that she also became a mother during this time to her beautiful daughter Lily. So I want to recognize Danielle for all her hard work in the past few years, and I wish her great success at Suffolk High School. Danielle, love. Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Peter Kincaid. Peter is a member of our Music Department. And Peter attained his Bachelor's in Music Education from Mythica College, as well as a Master's in Social Work from Stony Brook University. He began his career teaching fourth and fifth grade band at the Dryden Elementary School. After attaining his Master's, Peter worked as a licensed clinical social worker, providing mental health and substance abuse counseling to families and individuals at The Bridge Incorporated, a nonprofit agency serving the community of Essex County, New Jersey. Beginning in 2010, Peter worked for Sullivan County Poses, teaching elementary band and orchestra in the Monticello and Liberty School Districts. From 2011 to 2015, Peter directed band and orchestra at Sloughsburg Elementary School, and directed orchestra and orchestral in elementary school. However, it was in 2015 that all of Peter's hard work paid off, and he was brought up in the big leagues, directing the ninth and 10th grade concert band at Suffolk High School, teaching ninth and 12th grade lessons, as well as piano. This year, Peter is directing the Suffolk High School Jazz Ensemble. And to his credit, they reformed it this year so that we could even get more students, twice as many actually, involved in that ensemble. So it's a great, great achievement this year. We look forward to Peter's great work and many years to come. And just one note, you know, when you talk about teachers getting tenure, Peter did work in some of the other schools in the district. And there was this common thread that came through when I spoke to Joe, even Lee Weber, that the one thing you do see in his classroom is this amazing encouragement for his students and support for them. So it resonated with many different people, and which, you know, makes it very consistent. So it was a great thing to see, and I congratulate you, Peter. The next person is Meredith Freddy, she's not here this evening, but I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge her work as a member of the Guidance Department at Suffolk High School. Most recently, for the past two years, as many of you know, Meredith's been in the district for over 16 years. She came to us as the Director of Guidance from East Ramapo, served about 10 years as a Guidance Director, and then shifted over to the admin side. And to her credit, when we needed her most in a difficult time at the high school, she did some reflecting and went back to the Guidance Department, which was great for our students and our staff. So I just wanted to acknowledge her and congratulate her, this will be her third time getting tenure, so I guess she's... I don't know if she still gets a ten or not. So that's Meredith, and I'll tell everybody to clap. Last but not least, certainly not least, I'd like to call forward Dr. Andrew Trust, a Suffolk High School Assistant Principal. Andrew, I had a bag of comments, but I couldn't bring them in. I'd like to introduce Dr. Andrew Trust, Assistant Principal, member of the Administrative Team at Suffolk High School. Dr. Trust received his BA from SUNY Oneonta, his Master's Degree from CCNY, and ultimately his doctorate from Seton Hall University. Dr. Trust came to us from the Pearl River School District, where he served as an Assistant Principal for three years. Prior to that, Dr. Trust taught Social Studies and Special Education at Felix Festivus School in the Clarkstown Central School District. Over the past three years, Andrew has brought within him a strong work ethic, as well as a sense of humor, which he frequently shares with staff and students, whether you want it to or not. In all seriousness, the job of an Assistant Principal is difficult. One of the great challenges is really maintaining that balance, being the disciplinarian, the counselor, and the advocate of the student all at the same time. And Andrew's done that very well, and has established himself as a very effective administrator at the high school. Not only has he embraced the culture in many programs we offer our students, that's made him stand out, but he's also seeking to improve in that, seeking to improve them, asking the question, "How can we make things better?" To that point, in Andrew's office, thanks aside, that says the most dangerous phrase in education is... Andrew, want to finish it? Because we've always done it that way. And it is really through Andrew's actions that I know he means that, always questioning and trying to make things a bit better. So Andrew is a Principal Leader, P-R-I-N-C-I-P-L-E. And it's been a tremendous asset, it's nice, I have to explain why I did that, because the other day, Andrew sent out an email, we all have these really cool tags at the end of our emails, you know, "Principal", "Andrew, Assistant Principal", P-L-E, but it was an accident, it was definitely an accident. It made the English department run up, and, you know, it's got one. I want to congratulate you, the job well done, Andrew.
Dr. Lloyd, would you come up? I appreciate all the support for all of the candidates, but if you wouldn't mind, those that are from Sloughsburg in support of Joe, would you please stand? There's quite a few of the staff from Sloughsburg, so Joe, you have a few supporters down here, that's good. Dr. Lloyd is, in my view, exemplifies what I would consider to be the seven Cs of leadership. So some of you can count as I go through these. The first one is confidence. Joe, in every way, exemplifies that confidence through his actions, which are always intentional, they're deliberative. His decision-making is really based on the evidence, and he tries to anchor everything in best practices. It's reflected in assistive in the conversations that I've had with him, and have witnessed the conversations that he's had with a lot of others. Character, I think he models character in many different ways, and the Sloughsburg Elementary character rallies are pretty enthusiastic, where he discusses the pillars of good character. And I think, getting to know Joe over these few years, he really is a man of high character. Consistency, his behaviors are very consistent. And what impresses me a lot about Joe and his leadership at Sloughsburg is that he knows what the priorities are. And he looks at, you know, one of my many acronyms, WIN, what's important now. He's able to identify that and allocate his time and resources to make sure that he executes on what's important now. He's very collaborative, and in my conversations with Joe, what strikes me is this adage, I think it's a Native American adage, "We've been given two ears and one mouth, so we should listen twice as much as we speak." And so when you talk to Joe, he's really listening. And when he's in groups, he's seeking contributions, whether it's in administrative meetings or in his faculty meetings, he seeks contributions from everybody in the room, so I think his active listening skills are really superlative. Credibility, you know, coming into a building where, you know, Sloughsburg's kind of set in their ways, they were used to Eric, and you have to come in and establish yourself, and I think he did so very easily. And part of what struck me is, it's an acronym that principals know that I use, is DEWIZIT, Do What You Say You Will Do. And Joe does that. May not always agree, but Joe will do what he says he's going to do. Culture, the culture, as I see it in Sloughsburg, is represented by their acronym TEAM, Together Everyone Achieves More. And, you know, he's had surveys, and he's really tried to work to develop that team. And he uses a lot of sports analogies, and he has one coach that he likes, and he has pictures of him in his office. So TEAM is pretty important to him, and as a father, he coaches his daughter's team and his son's team in baseball and softball. So good luck with that, Joe. Community, he's always present at events, whether they're in the evenings, or on the weekends, the spaghetti dinner, you know, he's got an apron on, he's sweating in the kitchen, he comes out and he's fussing tables. He's at every event, and that's real important in an educational setting, so kudos to you on that, Joe. And I think what undergirds all of these seven Cs is the relationships that he develops with people. And I would capture that in slow is fast, and fast is slow. A lot of folks try to fake their relationships with people, they try to rush through it, and it's very transactional, people see through that. Joe takes his time, and because he takes his time, the relationships build quicker, and they're so much stronger, they're genuine, and they're authentic. And I'd like to say that Joe, first and foremost, is what I would consider to be a servant leader, where he exalts service above self. I see that in many ways, in his interactions and his involvement in the community. And he always ensures that what matters most is never at the mercy of what matters least. So Joe, I want to congratulate you on this, but I'd like you to bring up your family, if you don't mind. Heidi, you have to smile, all right? Don't be nervous, you'd like to chat with them. We're very fortunate in our school district and in the Sloughsburg community to have Joe as the Principal there. And so I'd like to congratulate you on tenure, should the Board chief...
I might as well say something after that. I just first want to thank the Board, the Central Strategic Director, Dr. Adams, for the tremendous opportunity that I was given several years ago to be the Principal of Sloughsburg Elementary School. It continues, and always will be an honor to be at that building. We have fantastic children who come to school every day, I've got a great team that I inherited, and wonderful families. I want to thank everyone for their support, for being here with me tonight, in spirit, just the attitude you bring every day to our team. Of course, I want to thank my beautiful wife, Amy, my beautiful children, Heidi and Roger, for the support they give me each and every day, my administrative colleagues as well, who are always around during the phone calls. Thank you so much, and it's an honor, and hopefully it'll be a yes tonight.
And all of the educators in the room know how children, many children don't have filters on what they want to say. And so I learned from both of these children tonight that he has a nickname. If you can't tell, he's forgotten a razor, so his name is Porcupine, as I understand it. But in closing, to the Board of Education, I wholeheartedly, without reservation, recommend all of the candidates for tenure this evening and to vote in a few minutes. I want to have the opportunity to just congratulate you all, and your family as well. Thank you.
At this time, I will take a little bit out of order, because we're going to have a bunch of workshops prior to the continuation of the meeting. But I'm going to switch around, we'll take a vote first, so we don't forget all the wonderful things that were said, and they say, well, you're monitoring your vote. So what we'll do is, we'll re-call the meeting. But before we do take the vote, I would ask that everybody stand before the vote. Okay, so what we'll do is, 2.01, 2.01 Professional Personnel Report. I assume everybody's read it. What I will do is, I will take it out of order, and we'll do that in the next two minutes. Just so we can let everybody go home. All right, so 2.01 Professional Personnel Report.
So Joe, I want to congratulate you on this, but I'd like you to bring up your family, if you don't mind. Heidi, you have to smile. Don't be nervous. You'd like to chat with them. We're very fortunate in our school district and in the Sloughsburg community to have Joe as the principal there. And so I'd like to congratulate you on tenure, should the board chief to vote.
I might as well say something after that. I just first want to thank the board, essential to meet their job, Dr. Adams, for the tremendous opportunity that I was given several years ago to be the principal of Sloughsburg Elementary School. It continues to always be an honor to be at that building. We have fantastic children who come to school every day. I've got a great team that I inherited and wonderful families. I want to thank everyone for their support, for being here with me tonight in spirit, just the attitude you bring every day to our team. Of course, I want to thank my beautiful wife, Amy, my beautiful children, Heidi and Roger, for the support they give me each and every day. My administrative colleagues as well, who are always around during the phone calls. Thank you so much. It's an honor and hopefully it'll be a yes tonight.
And all of the educators in the room know how children, many children don't have filters on what they want to say. And so I learned from both of these children tonight that he has a nickname. If you can't tell, he's forgotten a razor. So his name is Porcupine, as I understand it. But in closing, to the Board of Education, I wholeheartedly, without reservation, recommend all of the candidates for tenure this evening and to vote in a few minutes. I want to have the opportunity to just congratulate you all and your family as well. Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I will take it a little bit out of order because we're going to have a bunch of workshops prior to the continuation of the meeting. But I'm going to switch around where we'll take a vote first so we don't forget all the wonderful things that were said and may say, well, you're monitoring your vote. So what we'll do is we'll, we call the meeting. But before we do take the vote, I would ask that everybody stand before the vote. Okay, so what we'll do is 2.01. All right, 2.01 professional personnel report. I assume everybody's read it. What I will do is I will take it out of order and we'll do that in a little bit soon. Just so we can let everybody go home. All right, so 2.01. Chair, we intend to accept 2.01 as so stated. That's barred. Teresa, any discussion? No discussion? All right, here we go. Hold the favor. Stick your hand by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Abstentions?
So.
Congratulations. All right, so. Second spark. All the favors, if you're going to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? All right, we are adjourned for a short period of time. Congratulations.
Thank you. So nice to see you. Yeah, we're even good. So, and then he said, I knew you were like, you know, beautiful. Thank you so much. Nice to see you. Dad, I was reminded. That might be something you want to do. Like, what if I sit down? I'm like, oh, he's so wonderful. And I was like, dog here. This is what gets me like, no. What you want me to do is like, go on that.
Okay, I was supposed to. What we are looking to present as a final budget to the community, to be in the board tonight, is a tax increase of 1.21%, which is our tax cap for next year. Last year, we went out with a zero. This year, 1.2. The budget will go almost exactly 2%. And slightly higher than where we were after the last meeting. And because state aid came in a little higher. And we recommend taking this opportunity to put a little money aside in case there's a little more expenditures for special. Specifically, we always notice contingencies in special ed. One or two children could really affect our expenditures. So again, we left last meeting with a deficit of $477,000. I use the word deficit even though it was not complete. We just, you know, we were out of balance. The additional state aid, foundation aid, BOSI's aid are the two biggest pieces. When we contract for BOSI services, occupational education and administrative services, computer services, we get back BOSI's aid. Actually, when we contract for special education services, you get special education if you don't get BOSI aid on that. So since our addition in aid of $562,000 was larger, we're actually recommending, basically, we take that additional money, use it for spending authority. We don't have a reason to think we need it right now. And the board will know if that need arises during next year. It would only be for additional special ed placements. The electives, is this similar to the list we had at the last meeting? So this is still pending sufficient enrollment for some, but this is the goal within the staffing that's in our budget. And with some of the reductions in staffing to the elementary enrollments, we're able to reallocate staff. So this is really being done with the same FTE that we had this year, except for the bring back of two, decreasing two special ed classes to bring back certain students for outside placements.
Before you switch the slide.
Yeah.
We spoke about this at the last workshop. And it was made to the board and everybody else that all these electives come at no cost. Right? What you're saying, though, everything on this slide is no increase caused with the exception of special education classes.
Right, and that was actually a plan to increase every BOSI.
Right, so as we've discussed, those are classes that have not only a special education teaching assistant, but need, or the special educators are within current staffing allocation. Again, instead of reducing the number of special education teachers, because we know with reduced elementary enrollment comes reduced numbers of elementary classified students for special education. Instead of reducing the number of special teachers, we're going to reallocate those two teachers to teach new classes. The new additions in terms of staffing are the teaching assistants, who are much less costly than.
So then, in terms of actual budget impact, the only increase is to teaching assistants.
Yes.
Out of this entire slide?
The only increase in staffing, I don't think this works on this topic, is the two teaching assistants. Again, we would say that's the cost that is substantially defrayed by the decreased cost of tuition that we put into BOSI to otherwise hit you with.
So it's all, it's all set?
Yes.
Because I've sort of been struggling to see how this really fits into a budget presentation. This seems much more curriculum to me. Because if your budget is staying at the same level, it's not really doing any effects to budget.
It's part of us trying to communicate to the board and to the community what it is that is new for students. As we know, we ask people to come and support budget money. It was like that not only are we maintaining robust programming adding to it over the course of time with this company.
Thank you.
Okay, so. So compared to the last presentation, the tax buddy is about the same percentage.
Yeah.
And then the budget to budget increases a little higher. 1.95 became 2.01. So I understand the state aid came at a better amount. And we're keeping some in case of a special ed cost. But why is the budget to budget, why did we decide to up it to 2.01?
Well, to get that spending authority, basically for those contingencies, at 80,000. The difference between the 562,000 of additional state aid we got and what we were hoping to get at 477, which is good news, obviously, to the tune of the 85,000. The decision that we're presenting tonight is, basically, provide enough expenditure in case we need to spend that 85,000 on. So we have to put it on the budget side.
So it automatically goes up as a increase in the budget?
But if nothing changes as far as the placements, at the end of next year, we should see a minus, under spent 85,000 on that line.
So the final of that budget may not end up being that much.
And as you get your quarterly reports in, we're going to kind of, next year, kind of go through where are the unencumbered funds? Where are the funds we're not spending? Because in effect, that will provide two needs that the district has, which are not in this budget. Tax sorciaries, you know, we don't budget for them. They only show up if we, you know, spend a little less than what we planned or we find revenues above it, then we have enough money to set aside for tax sorciaries.
So this amount can look to the taxes?
Yeah, well, the board would have to take an action. And we would have to have a legal reason for, like, specific cases that were brought. And also, we were talking about a capital reserve. So that's kind of like, well, how does, how would funds end up at the end of the year? We try to budget conservatively, which means we plan for the highest possible expenditures. Do we get more retirements? Childcare leaves coming a little higher?
Unforeseen.
We should, yeah, we try to plan for unforeseen. And then the only break, it should be good news.
So my other question is very academic or purely unrelated. So whoever feels comfortable with that. In line with what my colleague asked about, these classes are not requiring additional funding. I've kind of digested the last presentation with anatomy and physiology, which I'm excited that we can offer as there's been a need for it. But also knowing that an anatomy and physiology class, to be taught at a college level, you need things that you can't have at school level, but requires a lab segment to it. So what are we providing in order to offer a strong honors level in anatomy?
So it is an honors level? You asked the question last time. It is not a college level?
Right.
The actual purpose of this class is to create a bridge for kids who do want to pursue these fields in college, but aren't quite ready to do it at the college level while they're in high school.
Exactly.
So this is authentically an honors level course, not a college level course.
Is it purely didactic with no that element, with no hands-on? It's purely didactic?
I doubt significantly that it's purely didactic, but I don't know the ratio of labs. I don't believe there's a separate lab class. I do believe it's within the, you know, the one period of the core.
So now what's offered to replace the college level hands-on cadavers, which obviously you can't have in a school setting, is a lot of manipulative models and 3D learning and also virtual learning tools that we might want to look at investing, you know, I know we're saying these are common, they're possible to really teach anatomy and physiology the right way. And even in fact, that's going to be helpful at a college level later on, is investing into some of those manipulative or 3D learning tools or any computer-based, you know, hands-on or anything, you know, to replace a lot of the. So, you know, again, I don't know who's making the suggestions about what to offer in the class and how far we can go. But I think, you know, we need to look closely in order to offer something that's worthwhile for these students.
We do have many subscriptions to electronic science-specific resources that we use in all levels of science in the district. I don't know if there are things in those subscriptions that are specific to this course, but I know we have certain subscriptions that we use. A12, Boardwell.
That might exist out here.
That might, yes. No requests have been made to me for additional resources.
Okay. And we have the manpower to teach that class?
Yes.
On staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the only change on the expenditure side from our last meeting is the special education part of the budget. And even with that change, because of some of the initiatives of bringing back students from sometimes higher tuition placements, still budget to budget, that line will come in less. But that's what brought the budget to a 2% increase. That's really the only change from our last meeting. Like most school budgets, it's salaries and benefits make up, in our case, almost 70% of the total. Obviously, if there's salary and benefits in special ed, they're in that salary and benefits. So what you see in those other slices of the non-salary parts of special ed, transportation, debt service, I think the district should be happy. It should doubt the fact we do not have a lot of debt. And we're looking to, over the next 10 years, do nothing to add to that debt. We're actually putting together a plan that will have our total debt reduce over that time and still meet the needs of our facilities. Revenues. Again, the biggest change there is on the state aid line and BOSI's aid line. State aid being primarily the foundation aid. And that's what brought our budgeting to balance. Once the state budget was finalized, everything else has been kept the same. The school lunch revenue that was shown last year was to help fund the cafeteria remodeling that we're hoping any day we will get finally a building permit so we can do that more for summer.
And questions about?
Sure.
Okay. So you've, clearly you've updated your numbers for the aid that we're going to receive this year. And reviewing the information from SED, I have a few questions. The numbers don't quite match, and I don't understand why. So three main lines I'm going to look at is state aid, building aid, and BOSI's aid. BOSI's aid is spot on to what SED shows. No question there. Building aid, if I read the SED report correctly, is off by approximately $89,000. You're about $8,100. What would I read off the report? And then there is also a difference in the state aid, which happens to be the exact number of universal pre-K listed on SED. So is that reflected somewhere else?
Yeah.
I just.
Universal pre-K is not, is not in the general fund. Universal pre-K, it's the special ed fund.
Okay.
So that number has to come out of the standing down the way.
Okay, so when I look at, so when I look at the SED report, there's a line for $256,500 for the pre-K. That's just in a different fund. So that's in here. So where is that?
It's not in here at all.
No.
It's in the special education, it's special ed fund. So it does not get accounted for.
And we can, when we, you know, any time, there's federal funds the district receives. IDEAA funding, small amount tighter one funding. Those funds are off budget. They're not part of this figure at all because there is a revenue stream that supports them fully. In that case, federal funds is really, the state aid is just summer handicapped and the UPK, that's a state aid piece that are also on our budget. It's fully state funded.
Okay, so do you have any idea about the difference in that building aid number? Why that would be?
We had, we looked at the rate, sometimes the ratios change exactly what percentage of building aid is. And we looked, I went to the court to report to see exactly what our aid was. It seemed to us that our IDEA were getting slightly lower than what they gave us. So we went with the numbers, us calculating, I know exactly what the first looking at we could be, pretty sure they were giving us.
As we close certain capital projects, if we spend less, they don't know that yet until we follow final cost reports. So we're in anticipation that both the middle school project that we're finally closing at the D and a few other things, that we will come in slightly less of our expenditures, which is good news. But it'll be ultimately reflected here. So we're taking it off. We're not counting them. We don't think we're going to do it.
So when they give you a number of, you know, $4.18 million, do you believe they're actually in that?
That's based on early filings of what we said we were going to spend for various capital projects. If we spend less, they give us less. So that's really what's.
Numbers get updated, like even BOSI's aid, like it was $300,000, $400,000.
Your BOSI number went up about $400,000.
Which is what they had. So booking from a couple of months ago, what we're spending is over. is already reflected in that. But we looked at the building aid in the same way, and BOSI's aid is, you know, that's not always 100%, even they're calculating based on estimates as well.
And we'll, next year, we go through as you get those monthly reports, and we'll show you where the revenues are coming in. And we're not, I can guarantee you, this is not gonna be where, at the end of the day, when all the dust settles, some will be higher, some will be lower. It's kind of, we're constantly just adapting to information as we, that comes to us. Okay, so where the money comes from, again, we are, there are some districts that get almost half, if not more, of their money from state aid. Obviously, we're not one of those districts, and even though we're looking a little poorer than we once did, you know, on state formula, we are not, we are still a wealthier-than-average district, and that's why we're looking at these figures. Statewide, the average is close to 40% that districts get in state aid. So obviously, every little bit we get is appreciated, but the bigger picture is, this is the budget that's supported by the local taxpayers, more so than other parts of the state, and even other parts of the county. The board tonight, one of your action items is to basically adopt this budget figure, and that's what the voters will vote on as Proposition 1. Kind of, the timeframe has changed, so we have to report this data by next Monday to the state, that's why we need your adoption tonight. Proposition 2 and 3 do not add any money to the tax levy. One allows us to spend money that was previously set aside in capital reserve, to do air handlers and to put generators in our secondary schools and administrative buildings, we currently do not have generators. And Proposition 3 is to just give us the authority over the next year, 10 years, to set aside up to $10 million, but there's two things that have to happen. First, we need to get the authority to even consider it, and then each year, voters and the board have to agree to put some money aside towards that $10 million. The board will decide to put money aside, and the, excuse me, and the voters will decide to spend the money, hopefully, for $10 million. So the voters will, and the board will speak on Proposition 3 again over the next 10 years, and we feel we can, also Proposition 3 comes with no additional tax levy, and will, as stated over the life of the district, over the next 10 years, we'll see that debt service line drop even more, and we really will be funding our facilities without putting out indebtedness. Any questions?
I'm sorry. Um, and, um, sorry, I still have to learn my way around this, no matter how many years I've been around. So in one of the workshops that I actually attended, you know, National School Board Convention, you know, there were sample budgets that were presented, and I noticed that I don't see in our budget usually a section when it says where the money comes from that is dedicated to grants. And the people giving this presentation relied on some grants or applied annually grants in order to subsidize their budget and reduce the tax levy. How do we feel about that? Do we apply for any grants? Are they too small to show? Is that something that we can look into in the future? And, you know, how does it apply to our district?
Well, any grants that are received can be appropriated by the board to spend as those grants come in. So this, again, assumes, any grant money would be above and beyond this, you'd have authority to spend above and beyond this for it, and, yes, first thing we try to do is make sure we get all the entitlements that we're, that are out there, and then the grant money, I mean, it's coming from various sources, and, you know, I think that, you know, we have been successful in the past. The largest grants do come from the federal government, and those are funded and are part of the audit. All the grants, we could also tie together in August when we're looking at the audit, we'll see the grants that come in each year, and the additional appropriations of grants.
Is there an effort to seek other grants that could be possibly not federal or state, but like a private entity grant?
Like, for example, special education this year, the, I think it's the, the one grant we're gonna speak about tomorrow. The bilingual grant. They earned a $50,000 grant for five years, so for a total of $250,000 to start a bilingual program. So that's a...
And the source was where?
That's from the state.
From the state?
That's from New York State. One of the challenges with the state and the federal grants is, they all start with qualifies. We rarely qualify because of our low mean-high resource position. We very often, I'll get to the third bullet, and I'll say, oops, no, we can't apply for that one, just because we don't fit the profile of what... What the opposite happened with the bilingual grant, we did fit it because we were, one of their main criteria was not having a program and looking to start a program.
Okay.
So what is that grant, what does that start, it starts with an extra?
Start with this.
So where is that, what is the question?
It's not in the budget.
It's not that bad of a question.
All these grants are captured in the special ed, special aid fund, so you don't see them here. But at the end of the year, like Anthony said, you see them in the audit, what the grant was, what was expended from the grant, so they're not part of this at all. And we've got, over the years, well, even in the 16 years, we've got a bunch of different grants. People apply, we don't always get them, we've had record retention get grants, we've had, like, this year, this $250,000, we've definitely had grants over the years.
And we can pinpoint, too, if we're, if staff are being added due to a grant, look, it'll be part of that resolution also.
So this special aid fund that you just referenced, that's also where the new three K money is?
Exactly.
What else is in that fund?
Title 1, Title 2A, 611, 619, it'd be this grant here, and UPK unfolding, pre-K holders in that.
Is that ever presented?
No.
But we can...
That's one of them.
I can bring it to you, actually.
Okay, but it's never presented before, it's never in this scenario of how much money is actually in there? Just in order to report, that's it.
But it is one of the budget reports that we see shows the federal funds, right? It'll show that we have funded, like the budget status reports. So we can, in the budget status reports, you see...
I mean, you wanna see during here, but like I said, during the audit as well, it's all there laid out like that, so that's what that is.
And so because we don't qualify for a lot of federal, state, but...
Grants.
Due to the need levels, et cetera, you know, applying for private grants might be something we wanna consider doing a little bit of, to, you know, have a buffer and, you know, reduce tax for...
Yeah, but even the nonprofits tend to hear their grants.
But a lot of them actually rely on accomplishments, like some of the ones we have in the district, so we might qualify, I mean, it's a venue we need to, you know, tap into.
Thank you. This one?
Yes.
So the initial point of the budget, I thought you had mentioned that you would see a three to five-year projection now?
Yes, we have to present, we need to present, actually, we're gonna work on it after this, is a five-year budget laying out, now that we have this one set, what the next five years are gonna look like, since that's not part of what the voters are voting on, but it is a requirement that as we close out the year, it's one of the documents that will be part of the audit that you're gonna get over the summer, so that's on our to-do list, is to give, it's a new requirement to have a layout of five-year expenditure plan. And it'll be along the lines of salaries, benefits, just like we do it here, what we project based on contractual debt, it'll obviously be the actual debt, everything's based on it, and we'll show the assumptions behind everything. And maybe half of the foundation aid, the word Title 2, will come in over the next five years. We'll show all the assumptions, and we'll make assumptions about the tax cap, 2% probably or some number less, and then we'll see if we save budget for those five years. Yes, that's a new requirement that just came this year. Not part of percent, what the voters vote on, it's still a one-year snapshot, but it is, now, this will become the basis for that five-year lookout that we have to do by this summer.
And with my assets, because it might, you know, with this, as you mentioned in the beginning, what you budgeted at April 4th was different than what actually came in the state aid on April 18th, and then extra funds are going to go kind of in the pot, and hopefully, if we need it, it will be there. So I was wondering if that three to five-year projection would see if those extra, could predict for us whether those extra funds are actually needed, because if we're over our general fund of 3%, and we can't carry that over and it goes back to the state, then might it be better to give it back to the taxpayers now as opposed to holding on to it? And that's why that three to five-year projection might help us make that decision with a little bit more data.
Yep, and the biggest, the biggest concerns we have internally is some things on a rough budget, like tax sorciories. Not budgeted here, if we have some big ones, that will eat some of that, those funds also. But yes, we can only carry 4% unencumbered, unreserved. After that, it's required that it goes to either reduce taxes or to a reliable reserve, so...
And so based on what you know now from the information that you have, you know, I understand you haven't yet made that projection, you think it's wiser to use this, even though it puritanly April 4th budget was already not over-budgeted, but was conservative in the estimates to prevent going under, you still think that it's best to hold on to that extra and not give it back to the taxpayer this year?
You know, without just giving you the specifics, $85,000 could be less than a one, one additional placement, depending on what the need is. So it's not a lot of money really for us to be setting aside, and, you know, some districts plan for, you know, three or five more, you know, placements, so we could absorb it if we didn't get the additional state aid, but we kind of view it as an opportunity, let's put it aside. And again, the, as we go through next year, we will see lines that are under-expended, and we will, the board will make decisions, either transfer that somewhere else, or, you know, put it into the capital reserve, or factor it into next year's budget. Again, last year, we were able to do a zero, this year, we're ramping up to 1.2% of the tax.
What is the timeframe? You don't know where, you don't know where it's coming from. What's the timeframe to have, to have that five-year projection?
We gotta do it by this August.
Okay, so is there a, is there a hard deadline for that?
It's gotta be part of the audit that we present this year, so the audit is the deadline, and that's usually done during August, presented in September, but it's hard to, we're gonna be working on it right after the budget, so... And it all comes down to assumptions. Again, seven years ago, if someone did a long-term budget, they would not have probably put in their plan that we're gonna have a great recession and we're gonna lose, we're gonna have a gap elimination adjustment, so...
Or a tax cap.
Yeah, or a tax cap, right, so...
Okay.
It's only as good as the assumptions, and we'll lay out what the assumptions are, but we can guarantee those assumptions will, you know, have some things that are close to being on, other things that are far removed, and then every year gets updated, I mean, we're gonna sit there and look at it, but, you know, internally, we're already thinking about next year's budget, we always are, so, I mean...
Okay, well, it's funny you bring that up. So, since we're rapping on, this is how, since, since we're rapping on this year's, or next year's budget, when do you start the budget process for 18, 19?
November.
Yeah, officially, yes, officially in November, but actually, when we're setting taxes, issues, setting reserves, again, it's, you're always working in that world of, you know, the future.
But, but there must be some point in time where you go to your buildings, you go to your administrators and say, budget season is starting, so...
Yeah, we have a budget calendar, we send it out in November, we, buildings are doing their work in December, we're being with them in January, and then, January, February, we're working in July.
You know, we spoke a little bit before about the information that's been presented and a lot of the questions that have come up, and I think, I think we both agree that, you know, perhaps next year, when we start rolling into spring, these presentations become a little bit more robust, and a bit more information that's presented beyond just the basic, you know, overview category numbers that, you know, are typically presented in the last three presentations. And I wonder, this is, again, I just throw this out there, if perhaps, beginning the workshops earlier than mid-late March may, may foster more discussion and, you know, really benefit going back and evaluating numbers. When we're getting this closed, you know, three workshops in a six-week timeframe, it doesn't leave a lot of room to ask a lot of questions that can be vetted out and, and really answer, that can amount to any type of substantial change in the numbers you've already put together, so... And it's something that I would like to see for next year, possibly, starting this process a bit earlier, and maybe space out the workshops more, you know, that's something that...
The biggest issue is, is the revenue side. We just don't know what it is. So that just becomes a hard thing to deal with.
I mean, I understand, at some point, though, like you say, if you're gonna do a five-year plan, you have to make an estimate, you have to take your best guess, I think you need to do that no matter what, whether it's March, February, January, if you're still taking your best guess on revenue, you still have to make sure you have a budget put together, so...
And we do, but then the question is for the board later on, is like, okay, what are we getting in revenue? Do we have to make cuts? And then we have to go back and do that, and there's no problem, we've done that in the past, but I'm just saying that if we can present information, the decisions really can't be made until later, because we don't...
Yes, that's understood.
It's a little different now with the tax cap. Because before, we could raise what we need.
I would like to see more time provided for substantial discussion and vetting than we had this year, so that's something that we...
The board's...
That's, that later time, just wanna throw it out there, since we're wrapping this budget season, so before we start the next one...
Again, we, we view budgets 12 months, so as you're getting those budget reports in July and August, that's, you know, maybe also we start the process then, because how are we doing? You know, it's always like, start with, how are we doing, how is 17, 18 looking? Because if we got problems there, they're gonna carry over. If we got good news there, then we can absorb some things coming head, but ultimately, how the budget's, you know, adopted by the board is your, is...
And I think that's a good idea, especially since you'll be working on that three to five-year projection, so that kind of gives the framework. So I think that's good.
When this budget season and everything you guys have to take care of now is through, and you're working on more of a projection-type of budget to, you know, present to the board, an area where I feel I need a little bit more information, I'm starting to lose a little sleep at night, is what, what repairs are needed in our buildings over the next five years. We've discussed a little bit on that, we touched on it when it came to the reserves we're trying to put aside, and what is the most urgent, such as the high school roof. So if we can also project kind of a timetable, and what we anticipate to happen when, and what costs, then that would be, that would be really helpful.
And, you know, you could be on a roundtable, we are in such a good shape with what we've done with facilities and how to have a plan out 10 years, you know, always good to have concerns, but we are in a really good shape. And a lot of districts are looking at needs, 80 million, 100 million, districts are not much larger than us. We feel with 17 million over the next 10 years, we can take care of it. But most definitely, I think that...
Thank you.
Right there.
Appreciate it. And we do get reports, monthly, quarterly, we're doing the budget, you know, August's big, the article report, and we're doing it all here. This is just a work in progress. That's the nexus.
Yes.
Yeah, so we do get reports here. Anyway, any other questions regarding the budget workshop? No? Okay, so, at this time, I will thank you, Anthony, for your opinion.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Teresa. All right, so we'll recall to order the RAPS and TULIS Point of Education meeting Tuesday, April 18, 2017. I don't know what the time is. 8:28, do you think?
8:28.
Sorry for the delay. Okay, he's back. All right, so, and I apologize to those in the audience for delaying the process for so long. Do we have a studio report tonight?
I don't see it.
Okay, I want to see it, read it. All right, so quickly, if we could then, 1.08 charitable motion, except 1.08 SSO stated. Teresa, for any discussion? All those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstentions, unanimous? All right, Dr. Adams, if you would.
At the last meeting, we recognized some eagle scalus, and tonight, we have two ladies here to represent Gold Award, and, so, we'll call them up. Paige or Victoria, who wants to go first? Paige! And so, Paige, if you would, share the project that you've worked on.
So my Gold Award was raising suicide prevention awareness in my community, and the way I did that was through the use of daffodil bulbs, and the idea that daffodil bulbs come back through harsh winters, and the person can do this... And the idea that daffodil bulbs come back through harsh winters and the person can do the same. And I was able to give out nine thousand daffodil bulbs to my community and the school district.
Victoria.
So basically, what I did was, when I was younger, I went to Suffolk Village Museum and I thought it was really interesting. So I went back and basically what I did was load a lot of artifacts, ranging from like medals and paperwork and lots and lots of newspapers. So that's basically it. But I wanted to give back and that's the way I felt that it was really like something that not a lot of people go to, so go.
Yep. This is a part of, or probably the most rewarding part of my job, to recognize students and their excellent work. So Victoria and Paige, you know, the projects that you, you did, giving back to the community and raising awareness, it just really speaks volumes about you and your character. So again, congratulations. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being patient. It's eight-thirty, you thought this would be seven-thirty. Thank you and good luck in the future.
Don't, don't be afraid to believe.
Thank you.
All right, so we're at one point, 1.10, public participation, public participation has to action items only. Action items are the items that are behind me or two miles left. Two point, well, 2.01 we already spoke about, but yes, 2.01 through 2.09. This session will last normally about thirty minutes. If you have a statement or a comment in respect to those action items only, please step up to the podium, state your name, school affiliation. You'll have three minutes to register your march support. Seeing none. Sorry, it's distracting. Seeing none, we'll pause that portion of the meeting. All right, so action items, 2.0, well, we already did 2.01. Congratulations to all those who, who are getting this from this down there. So 2.02, 2.09, I was not asked to control any of those items. Does anyone wish to control any of those items? No, so I'd like you to attend the agenda for 2.02 through 2.09 charity motion to set those associated. Clark? Okay. We'll see it tonight. Teresa, Amani, second, Amani, any discussion? All of the savers signify by saying aye. Aye. Are opposed, seconds, unanimous? Okay, Mr. Chief?
Oh, right, I said second. Oh, second, I got second. I am prepared.
All right, anyway, 3.01, 3.01 strategic planning update at this time. I'll turn the light over to Mr. Walter.
So the intention is to provide the board with an update of a couple of different aspects. First being, those who do public work that the three committee members have been doing for the past couple of months and continue to be working on through June. And then to talk about some of the action steps that the administration and staff have taken in response to the goal and objective that was drafted by the Strategic Planning Committee specific to communications and partnerships, or as this board kind of referred to it last time, public relations, branding, marketing, or some of those other terms. So it's really kind of a bifurcated presentation. Hopefully this makes sense. I always like to try to frame this in some way, or the context uses a quote. This is a quote that I've used with my experience in the past, in terms of what our goal is and the fact that failure really isn't an option when we look at our whole community experience, perspective, and knowledge over time about this work in this district in the future. So as the board knows, we've engaged in a number of different mechanisms and efforts to recruit new committee members. We had about fifty members between the three committees last year through social media connected, the website, and Excelsior Newsletter, which as we know, go back to the entire school district. We were able to recruit one new stakeholders, meaning parents, committee members, and staff, and recruit the seven new students across the three committees for this spring's work. So we're excited about that and definitely brought new energy and different ideas to continuing this work this spring. The work this spring has been done thus far on a monthly basis and will continue to be on a monthly basis through the end of June. The planned and anticipated outcome is between four and six measurable statements for each prioritized goal. Meaning that at the end of this entire process, correct me if this, each of the seven goals, we have between four and six measurable statements. So between, let's do the math there, we will correctly, twenty-eight and forty-two measurable statements total that we look at in terms of how we're assessing progress toward these seven goals over the course of time over the next few years. So we anticipate the next checkpoint will likely to be a report to the board and the committee this summer from each of the committees doing this work about the process and how they arrive at the measurable statements they brought up and of course, sharing those with the board. Shifting gears a little bit, when we spoke about this topic last time, it was over overtly stated, but we got the impression that the board's priority in terms of interest was around the goal and objective related to highlighting our district, promoting our reputation as an innovative top-formal school district, and how we would go about accomplishing that. And what the committee came up with, as you remember, was since we expanded opportunities to promote our distinctive brand as a premier public school district, both within the committee and to external audiences. And so we talked to our Strategic Planning Group about our means and ends. So they set the end, which is they want to see this happen. Our job as administrators, as leaders, is to figure out the needs. How is it we're going to get there over the course of time? So with this being drafted by our stakeholder groups, I want to share with you some of the action steps that we've taken over time in response to this, with this being the end goal. And there'll be several pages of these, so I'll go through. Admission of non-resident tuition students. I've given you some of the background data there. We've had sixteen student applications since the policy was, was adopted by the board. Ten of those students have been admitted for them currently attending, expanding grade placement from kindergarten through high school. We already had two new students accepted for September of next year and a couple more for September under review. Obviously, expanded, I think dramatically by all accounts, our social media and local media presence. You can see there in terms of the rankings of the county, we have by far the most active followed Facebook pages in this county and the second most followed Twitter feed in this county. We have Clarkstown, who obviously has a much greater wealth of folks to draw from. Over a hundred of our teachers are represented across all schools. And we have other districts in the county contact us and how we've gone about growing these, because they're in a course to be the second. One of the other things that we're very proud of, the relationships we've formed through the general news and other local media. We've had several feature stories, you see two of them graphically depicted on the right front page, stories that are positive stories about our school district, which we know are very, very important in terms of getting the word out beyond just our school district. Of course, also, it's been well discussed in the week, pretty much every room everywhere in the school district with regard to the name change petition. No, certainly about the overwhelming community support for that. We know that the petition has been sent to the commissioner's office. And at this point, the decision is pending from the commissioner. We've also updated the format of the Excelsior Newsletter to look, what we would call the collegiate. Not really than any other school district, public school district communication newsletter that you'll see anywhere. We also, for the first time in the fall and winter, distributed it not just to the thousands of school district residents, but also to every resident of Tuxedo. It's part of a continuing effort to make sure that they are aware of how fantastic the opportunities are this year. It's also pretty well established and known that we've created a series of videos. We came to the board about this time last year telling you that this was our plan to begin to go in this direction with exactly this in mind. These videos, the eight of them, for the middle schools to be released on Facebook on Friday, have been almost seven thousand times collectively. And through Facebook, we were able to boost them and we sent them to party folks in wide age spans who are residents not only obviously of the school district, but of the other municipalities out there. And so our video has been viewed almost sixteen thousand times by residents just to those communities along the way. We also have been engaged in collecting data and trying to get the better understandings of moving to our district from that. And so the three bullets you see there are in order of the commonality. So the most common, it's not limiting, the most common area or place that current students are moving here from is another country. The second most common is elsewhere in this county and the third being Northern New Jersey. So that helps us as well to figure out where we are and how folks who know about, not just the school district, but about the municipalities, about the villages, and about the people that live here. So it helps us to figure out where we land, which may run into targets in some of our communication at the time. Obviously, the board and community are also hopefully well aware of the kindergarten, pre-kindergarten pilot program. We will be in September, again, part of the pilot, meaning that success means that it grows over time. And in terms of some internal communication and trying to highlight and trying to focus on folks who do outstanding and often unsung work in the school district, we created what we call Mountain Superstars, which are weekly features that are communicated not only within the school district, but through Facebook about some of the fantastic folks that we have working here. And those have got unbelievably positive reviews. And we have probably two dozen nominations that we'll be working our way through through the rest of this year and to them. Additionally, as I'm sure again, folks know, we had a wildly successful STEAM Expo at the high school, hosting about two thousand visitors early in March. We followed up through collaboration with the Reach Foundation, we were able to get information about all of the visitors who were not residents of the school district. And so we followed up specifically with that group to provide them information and access to further conversations about the appeal of moving here and growing the children here. So we use that as an opportunity, not just to showcase what we do, but to hopefully grow the district through that over the course of time. We've also created what we're calling a superintendent's task force, with the idea really being that the only way that these efforts are successful and sustainable is that this is an entire school district, community effort. It can't just be that the school district is the only one, the only folks working to try to recruit folks. It has to be about the villages and the county. And so we brought those people together, the village mayor's, the R E D C, the buying group, which is a local marketing firm, Suffolk Chamber of Commerce, former town assessor, RTA leadership, NTA council leadership, local business owners. And we've had a couple of very successful meetings where the idea is, we need to come together, make sure that there are collective efforts here and know that the villages have to be an integral part of this. They have, they, every village should be able to present, in my opinion, to their residents what it is they're doing to attract them. It can't just be about the schools. And so again, the goal is to retain and attract young families with public school ages to this, to this school district. We use the term for them synergy and synergistic efforts. And we're starting to see some of those things come to life. Continued action steps, we've held or will be holding meetings with several groups, including mostly not all of the major local realty, the RBA, the Pattern for Progress, the Chamber of Commerce, and then of course, following up with the task force to report back to them what it is they were hearing, what they were learning and figuring out how that can contribute through some action planning that they as village leaders and as county leaders can be taken into account as they go through their own marketing and branding and cover creation methods. And some things to get close to closing here that are in progress and some next steps we're working on. This is a direct result of the task force establishing a visitor center in the village of Suffolk in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, the Samaritan Hospital, and the R E D C. So we'll be hoping to partner with the mayor to view his face there and get that going hopefully in the next couple of weeks to months. We'll be having a really robust student and teacher center presence at the Suffolk Street Fair, the Sunday, sharing mountain pride, different amounts of swag and all these sorts of great things with visitors to the community and current residents on Sunday at the street fair. We're really trying to work through the task force to make sure that there's some collaborative PR efforts with the villages, that the villages need to be working together. I understand the village of Vermont just recently hired someone to help with their public relations. And so our goal would be, of course, to partner our resources with theirs and then of course, with the other villages as well, so there's some consistent messaging and effort around this, that we're all working for the same goal and going in the same direction. And we're also engaging in direct outreach to Tuxedo Town Board, who have been attaching to town supervisors there. And they've expressed interest in their town board coming to tour our schools, which we view as a very positive step toward what may eventually be a really great experience for those resident students here, as well as developers and investors, not only with the Sucea Farms Project, but other folks who we know are putting a lot of money, especially into these solo experience, Tuxedo areas, trying to figure out how we can partner with them, how our task force can partner with them to help to build up this school district media over the course of time. In terms of reporting, some progress, I've said to you many times, things can only stay the same. It can get better or get worse in a number of different areas. Things are getting better than they have been the past few years. We've enrolled over a hundred and fifty new students since September, which is a higher number than similar measures over the past few years. Our enrollment since September has increased by about 1%, by about forty students, which is significant as we know, example, last year, the state version stacked, which had, so that's obviously better. And every school, all seven schools have a greater enrollment today than they did on the first day of students enrolled in the school since September. Again, not the case in some recent projects. So we're happy to be able to report that progress and that this, this very work that's kind of going so far.
Thank you. Questions?
Just got a comment. Teresa, I, I just want to say you guys are doing a great job with this particularly. I've never seen a school district presented such a, it's always a positive, but with social media outreach and all the stuff that you thought everybody's been involved in. I seen it really reach some balance about what it was in the past. I just want to thank you guys really and I commend you for it. I am the village of Suffolk, Facebook pages, police department, and I know how much work it is to run it and also to get the information out, but you're doing an awesome job. I have friends and colleagues who live in Tuxedo, North County, my, my friends of Iowa, who continually are asking about the district every day because they're seeing these videos and they're seeing these publications again. And I just, you're doing an awesome job, everybody knows.
It's an easy place to find great things to share, which is a great place to start. Not being challenged to find great news is a wonderful first step.
Well, thank you, David.
Will you present this?
So I have a few questions where I love what you're sharing, I just need more detail. So for example, we have forty students since the beginning of this school year and I guess you say it covers pretty much the whole state of the seven schools. So I'd like to see this in more detail, what race, these students come from and where they moved from. Where you said, you know, we have the foreign country, we have the county, we have Northern New Jersey. If we can see maybe, you know, that data in the table or a graph of some sorts, what race they're coming into, where exactly they're coming from. If we're staying in foreign country, Rockland County, and you know, Northern New Jersey, what's the percentage of each or what are the actual numbers of each category? So that we have a, you know, a grip on where are we drawing them from, besides the fact that they're, you know, these categories. And also, the hundred and fifty-one new students since September, where did we draw them from? I'd be very curious to see, you know, the details of those numbers. So maybe in, in a, in another presentation, give me another...
That's a, that the board prioritizes. If we can put together anything the board wants, I always say, if you can clarify for us what your goal is, what questions we're trying to get answered, and maybe a different way.
Right, so I want to just be clear enough so that everyone understands what I'm saying. If we drew a hundred and fifty-one additional students this year, it'd be beneficial to know what race we're moving to, which schools into, and for where, if they could be broken down in these categories. these categories. And then, again, you know, dividing them by foreign country, or Northern New Jersey, or elsewhere, where did they come from? The videos have been great, I want to compliment that, and Facebook is a crazy machine because you share, that means you share with a little thousand people, and I see how the numbers can build up to these numbers, so thanks for that.
I would say that's a good anecdote, that you're going to see other districts, I guarantee you're starting to use videos more, because we've gotten outreach from three other districts in this county over the past couple of weeks talking about our goals and how we've done that.
Right. And the videos have been very well made, I have to say.
I said what you didn't know.
Besides, yeah, besides the positive message, having the students talk about their own experiences is always very attractive and wonderful to hear from them directly, as well as obviously the staff and the great teachers that we have.
Easy to find, easy to find great.
The material is there. I have a question regarding the task force. I'm told again through the grapevine that not all our mayors are on the task force. Are we missing any?
What I would say is all the mayors were invited to participate. Majority of them have been to at least one of the meetings, and we've had discussions with the others. I'm not going to comment necessarily publicly, but it has, it has a tent for all of them.
Okay. So maybe we can renew that invitation because it would be us to have all of them there, hopefully.
Yeah.
The follow-up on non-residents from this team, that's an awesome idea. So we collected data when people walked into this team symposium, and then we contacted people. Why did we send them that?
We sent them a number of different pieces of information, some of the breakable social programs, some videos, links to Facebook page, where to find us on social media, and I gave them for better or for worse my copy.
Pretty sneaky. Okay. Wonderful.
That was a while ago, but good, I guess.
All the time. Do we really foresee having large numbers of non-residents? The numbers are still not huge. So we opened the door for non-resident students, are we expecting to grow more than what we have?
I think we're expecting to draw some more than what we have. We've never anticipated it to be a significant number because these are folks who are already paying local school and property taxes elsewhere, and are paying upwards of $10,000 tuition to attend to. So we never thought it would make up for displacement of graduating seniors or staying in kindergarten, but it's, as we saw, one of 15 different things, and so it's more students than good ones.
And when more we know about our PPA numbers, about when, I remember sometime, like it's very, we start getting applications, but by when can we?
I am as eager as you are.
Okay. That's very good.
I'm not sure if I'll have them by the next meeting, I should have them in two weeks.
And they can continue to enroll for the summer on what you said, right? But some for the next year. Great expectations in terms of these.
Yeah, I don't know what I'll have at that point, but by the meeting, like the budget for the meeting, I should have them.
Thank you.
What is?
The presentation. I have a couple of questions. This is our first presentation, which is the one in the fall. At that time, I had certainly an impression that was, what you had said was that the committees would have their goals. Did you present one of the goals from one of the committees, or the other two committee goals?
No, no, it was, the goals and objectives were already written, drafted, and were shared with the board in the last year. What the committees are doing now are coming up with measurable statements to assess progress toward those goals over the course of time. That's the goal.
Okay. And do you know what the other two committees' results are for that?
I think you're going to be getting the presentations from Lee and from Lisa and Stella who are about to provide us of their committees toward that. I think they're all virtually the same ways, which the committees are working through, sifting through a large amount of data to be provided for them in response to areas that they, if they were interested in, then their goal over the next couple of meetings will be to sift that through and use it to create the statements which will happen.
Okay. So those other presentations are happening for the other committees?
Lee Weber's committee will present on the second meeting in May. Lisa and Stella Green's will be the second meeting in June.
Okay, excellent. And it sounds like you have quite good data for each way. One of the things that we're looking for in this presentation, I think we spoke about in meetings, having a little bit more in the way of that baseline data so that we can really understand what your projections are and how you're going to measure whether you achieve those goals. So for instance, in this presentation, my question for you is specifically, for instance, with regards to how many people are coming into the district? How does that measure up? How many people have left? How many people have come in? So what's your net change in terms of data there? And how does that compare with previous years? So is it that 151 people came in, but you had 300 people left? So really, that would mean a negative. Do you have a sense of that?
The net increase is 40.
So you can roll it over, you have new students, so that, so if your net increase is 40, 40, and that means that difference there has lessed.
Correct.
Okay. So what percentage of the increase is that?
Forty over, well, 40 over the entire, so 41, 42, 43.
0.9%. So that's actually, that would be helpful in your retention for this data because, you know, obviously 10% increase would be wonderful, 1% is hard to know, especially if you're going to go year to year to monitor your progress. That would be a helpful metric to have in a graphic representation. So then the board can be more informed about, okay, so we've gone up by 1%. Next year, if we go up by, you know, 1.1%, that's not much of a change for 1%. You understand what I'm saying?
I certainly understand what you're saying. I'll go back to you, because you can create any presentation of what you like, or the data you like, and just clarify about what your goals are so that we're not responding to six or seven different.
Well, I thought we had that discussion that right after, Howard, you actually wrote down what you wanted, you said, oh, Dr. Howard, I think you want really important metrics, and I said, yes, perhaps we can write, so I think we were ready to clarify that.
Perhaps just want to clarify.
Okay. No problem. Other questions? So the percentage, obviously 16 student applications, the ones that did not come, the six, was that because they chose to go elsewhere? Was that, do you follow with those people to find out why they didn't come?
I think the reason was there were 16 who applied, 10 were accepted, so six were not accepted.
Oh, six were not accepted, okay. And, oh, with regards to that survey that you sent out to the people who attended the scheme, one of the things you might want to consider is adding more qualitative type questions such as, what would, what would make you want to move to this district? What is it that you like about this district? So you might be able to then tap into, you know, what does an outsider, how does an outsider perceive us, and how can you potentially increase that attractiveness in, you know, then frame the informational panels to really hone in on that, those key elements that the outsider just might be attracted to around this district that way? Just a suggestion, something that you might want to consider. Oh, I also agree that with the, it's helpful to know, you know, I think this is in a ranked order, the people that are coming from other places, foreign country, Rockland County, Northern New Jersey, is that in order of frequency? Okay. And so of those, I guess that's, again, the baseline data is really helpful. Has that changed from where people were coming five years ago?
Yes, I would imagine so. I would have to.
To look at a five-year trend would be very, very helpful, if, if everyone agrees. I think to look at a five-year trend and see how much progress we made this year compared to last year, how was that, would be very, very helpful, given what the time is available.
I just did right now, I think you just gave us an overview, am I correct?
Yeah, that was the intent.
Yeah, I think we're doing, I just don't think, I'm just saying, I don't know if you should call him at the spot, I'm probably, I just.
This is not intended to call him at the spot.
Okay, but you're questioning him on things that he doesn't obviously have information on. Does he have the information? He tells.
I'm more than, we're more than happy to provide the board with any information that we like.
Well, we should ask him to email and tell you instead of on the spot.
I just, this is a long-term issue. Measuring six months versus last year's six months is life, something we can certainly do, and we did it here to report some forward progress, but we'll know if there's impact three years, five years. We never anticipated there would be immediate overwhelming impact to this work.
Change takes time.
It's amazing, interest in a place that folks, some kids haven't heard of, and building partnerships and relationships, so it's not just two or three people doing all of the surfboards, there's no system.
And this is a lot more than what was happening before.
That's why I want to make sure that we're also understanding the framework of our goals. We can report progress toward lack thereof all the time, but we're not living and dying without this, we're thinking about three, five, and seven years down the road. Are we creating conditions for folks to move here? And right, we want folks who have two and three-year-old kids to move here, thinking about what it's going to be like in ten years. That's our.
Absolutely. And you've done fabulous September, and I know that you've had many, many meetings since the beginning of the year, I'm sure, and so I know you probably have a lot of data to see, so I'm not trying to pinpoint you as a smart question, I'm just trying to do a suggestion perhaps, how to help me understand a little bit better, because I know you probably have a view on that, and something that you've looked at probably obsessively, going for great work that you do. So I'm just asking for just a little bit of context, because I find it very difficult personally myself to understand data if I don't have that baseline or that context. I know we did receive the votes in the presentation, it's very helpful, three years ago, that gives us that context, and maybe, you know, maybe even I can sit down and explain it simply a little bit better, because without that context, the numbers, 1.1 is hard for me to know what that actually means out of the term. So it's not at all meant to, which one is not, or anything like that, it's just meant to have a conversation, to collaborate on this, so that we as a board can make more informed decisions.
And I don't feel that I'm spot at all.
Thank you. I'm very lucky to be over. I'm not a mean person.
Wouldn't think you would be, but I'm actually going back to the board, just to provide us with everything about what it is, you as an entire board are living for, and we'll be happy to talk if you have that.
Obviously, thank you. Obviously, the decisions that the board makes at every meeting and considers between meetings is dependent on the data that you're giving us. For example, where are we investing more teachers, where are we hiring more, where are we not hiring more because we're lacking in that area or these grades? How things, the numbers are shifting year to year, several important decisions that will have, important data that will help process board members, you know, make those decisions at every meeting. So that's, that's the point, it's not, you know, it's not really your questions, it's can you help me be a better board member because I have the information and I'm willing to make those decisions? And thank you again. A lot of work has gone into this, and it's obvious, so thanks to everyone who's served in the committees.
So one of the things that maybe it'd be worth discussing now then, that I from what my research has done in terms of what moves into a strategic plan based on strategic planning, presented to businesses and presented to other corporations, I think it's helpful to have kind of a baseline, what is the question, based on what the needs are, and then you've already presented the needs presentation, so we don't have to look here again, based on that, what is your question, and then what are your metrics that you will be following? What do you guys think about that format? That's the format that I've always seen with regards to strategic plans and corporations and institutions.
Do you have any questions about this? I mean, I, me personally, I mean, I, you know, I've seen all the work that's been done over the last year, and I understand what part this is saying to a certain extent. But again, as you said, Steve, you know, and I know this has been an anticipated presentation, but when you're comparing, you know, today to two months ago, today to six months ago, these aren't short-term goals, these are longer-term, and you have to do so much work to even see a tech in a change or a small change in, in any of these numbers. You know, if you look at the, you know, the 115 or even 151, you know, new students, where it does the net is now 40, you know, they're aware of where they, where they came from, and that's why I think we're focusing on, especially in the committees, who's being targeted and all of this stuff? What, what area's being targeted? I think we spoke about in Jersey, Hoboken, and go into certain areas like that. So it, that's all coming through, and that's what, that's what they're doing. So I'm just not sure what kind of format here, losing your, or the board wants them to go through that, to present that data to make it seem rather somewhat clearer, you know, the net's the net, and those will come from far. Not an interesting, interesting stat, you know, and others maybe, you know, from Rockland and Hoboken. But I don't, I don't know how much detail, this is new, this is kind of new, and I think they're still waiting, still trying to develop certain metrics. I think it's a little premature, you know, to be asking for this stuff, we're not going to get it in the next month, I'm going to get it in the next two months. We're talking maybe in the fall, or late, late summer, or some other, some other earnings that we buy. Just not sure what you're asking, as far as, as far as what you.
I'm not asking for, because I'm just asking for the baseline, so we can have the baseline so that we don't have any charters or numbers. I'm not asking for projections, I'm not asking for, it's just the baseline, that we can say you have 120 minutes.
Marley, should you reference a format that you've seen before? Would it be possible to share that with Steve and I? Then we'll have that context to, I think, we have the data, but we're not hitting what you need, and so if you gave us the format, that would give us the context, and then maybe we can structure it to provide the data in a usable format. Is that be all right?
Excellent. Quick question. How, how often do you feel you should update the board? Like what is your plan? Quarterly, is it, you know, what do you have in mind as far as updating us? Because I think.
I update constantly, I update the board.
Or will we ask the superintendent to ask you to update us?
For us, you know, Steve mentioned there's 51 new committee members and seven new students.
Maybe monthly, right?
Students are, or this year, there's 51 new committee members, right?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, and seven new students. And, and it's loud in there, they're, they're in the room that you go to in executive session. I have to leave my office because it gets so loud in there, and I can't do work because they're, they're really engaged in there, they're up at the butcher block theater, and it's, it's just great to watch them in action. But they, to get that all organized, they didn't start meeting again until January or February. And so they're doing a lot of work, trying to come up with four to six measurable statements for each of the seven goals. So then they'll report back, and we'll report back in July or August. Look, you know, we're, we're doing this a lot differently than what has been done at the hat, or the way it's been done in the past, and in order for us to keep the enthusiasm, or for me, in order to keep that enthusiasm with the parents, the staff, students, I think we need to let that, that take its course, so maybe a couple of times a year, and I think tonight we intentionally did this PR branding piece first, because in November, that, that seemed to be the bulk of the questions, it's about that. And so we're spending, I don't know how long, 30 minutes or 40 minutes on Steve's presentation tonight. We could have done all three tonight, but we may not have given justice to the other two. So trying to break it up, let Steve go this time, Lee in May, Lisa in June, then back in the fall when we will have new students, not totally, because we're a little smarter this time where we don't have all seniors that graduate, so we're trying to do sophomore, junior, senior, so we have some continuity.
And the reason I ask is because if you're going to provide a template of format, that gives us time to kind of, as a board, look at it, you can look at it, evaluate how that might fit into the data you have, and then we can decide as a board what information we do want, so that we're giving you the one direction as far as what.
And see, Marley's comment earlier, Steve probably knows the data, I'm sick of the data in a way. We look at the data, we looked at the data today on certain things, and with enrollment information, we're constantly looking at that. We look at the kindergarten registrations for next year, the change in each grade and each building. So we're looking at all that, that information, but, you know, so if Marley shares the format and we develop this baseline to all we're looking for, then we'll be able to structure it.
I think if nothing else, like you say, if nothing else, we've elevated the topic in the school district committee such that it's an undeniable priority toward the children for everybody who lives here. And so I would go back to, part of our work is about building relationships and helping folks understand why this is in everybody's best interest to have this school district being a phenomenal place for kids to learn. So everybody's got to be a part of that. The leaders in the villages in this county, and the R E D C, they all have to be a part of that effort, and we're seeing progress.
Putting a positive message out is definitely right now.
I have a quick one for you. It's approximately 1% increase on enrollment. Do you, have you looked to establish, or do you know what a reasonable percent increase is each year that you are, that you want to achieve? I mean, 1% may be great, right?
It was given.
Right. But I'm saying, you wouldn't want a 15% increase in one year because you probably couldn't take that in, given, you know, infrastructure and overhead and personnel and everything else. So do you have any idea of what that, like a good number, like it might be 2%, maybe it's, you know, 3%?
First, let me clarify by saying that's since the start of the school year. What's going to happen, though, is in June, 370 kids are going to graduate from high school, and then September, 240 are going to come to the class.
Right.
One of the things that my committee unquestionably will be looking at is developing some measurable statements around enrollment. I will, I will tell you in the interest of candor, my guess is that it's going to be about trying to sustain what we have, rather than decreasing the amount of people. That's because, if you remember, the trend has been this.
Yes.
So we're looking to try to stabilize this at this point before we set.
So the 1% increase here really is phenomenal?
I don't know. We can't answer it. We can't answer it. But it's also, it's better than it was last year, and it mitigates the displacement of the 370 district.
And then my other quick question is, when you went through the social media part, and, you know, because you, you've got it in here, you know, how, how popular the district is on Facebook and Twitter and all that, you've got more Facebook followers than any other town than there is a district. Second highest on Twitter, and I, I know who the number one on Twitter is.
It's Quark.
By Longchamp. So my question to you is, is Quarktown, or what district do you closely, most closely associate? Like, who do you, who is your best?
For this, for this purpose?
Just in general? What, what district do you look at?
For the quality of education.
What district do you compare?
Nobody in Rockland and Temblest in the county.
We, nobody.
Not, not, not for quality of education, no.
Do you get any idea what the nation would look at?
And they are.
That's a fair answer.
Almost, except the one that, that joins us, almost every district in the county has now contacted us about what we're doing. You know, how, how do you do these videos and tell us about your social media presence? And so they're, they're calling Steve, and we're not calling them because they're, we're not learning anything.
So you really, you really are the progressive new district in this county. You really are at the forefront of sort of this 21st century district in terms of what we're offering our students, our technology, our outreach, and everything else.
Yeah, we say that, but we genuinely believe.
Do we learn from them?
Of course. And we collaborate with them, but we, we believe that when a family chooses to move from anywhere else to here, the education system is going to get us better, no matter where they come from. We truly do.
You know, Lee may present this in her report in May, but I don't recall how many school districts this year have come to visit us to see what we're doing. And we, we don't feel a need to go and look at the Rockland and Temblest, because I think we have more programs, and best teachers, greatest opportunities for the kids.
Okay, anything else? Steve, again, thank you so much for all your work. Thank you for this presentation. I know you have been working tirelessly promoting the district and not just being, picking one thing, following the community seven million times, you know, we can't do ourselves. We need everybody else to help us. So, yeah, Danny's done a great job with, you know, keeping up with the, the social media as well, his group effort. So thank you very much. We're forward to this presentation in the next two minutes or so. Any other questions or comments? No, very good. Okay, so at this time, we are at public participation, this public participation is the end school district business. This session will last 30 minutes. Please step up to the podium, state your name, school affiliation, you have three minutes to address the board. I will remind the audience, of course, pursuant to policy 1230, 1230 to 40, that no comment can be made with respect to any district personnel or district students. We have three minutes, you've got your comments to the, to the chair.
Carol Lou Verona, Suffolk High School, Suffolk Elementary School, life member. Going back over the years, I just want to bring up, we've always had a good standing record, state and national, and we've always just about, since I can remember, been superior to the others in our district. I think one time we were even 10th on the list. So I think we really have a district to be proud of. And the other thing I'd like to say is demographics help, whether it's fleeting or it's extended. When you have new people coming and going, it's good to look into the demographics on all sides and angles, because it makes it easier working with the kids with the people that are working with you, to expand your knowledge and perhaps increase the growth. So the sooner you can get the information out and share it amongst each other, I think the more benefits everybody will receive from it. That's it.
Josie from Savannah, my daughter goes Montella Elementary School. I had a situation at the elementary school today. I'm a little bit very dead for what's in my wife right now, and not that this is involved with that, but I went to pick her up from school, and she was taking her early by my wife without me, not my knowledge. Okay. Well, she sent a note in that she was taking her out early. When I asked the school for copy of that note, because I have a court order saying I'm entitled to that, and if she has to copy that court order, and I ordered copy of the board to review, prevent you from going to court this week, I can have the court charge, which costs you about $3,000, so I'm going to ask for full legal fees for that. Judge Eisen was assigned a court order back in November, give me full access to all my my track, my daughter's attendance records and education records.
So did you, did you justice with the principal?
She, I don't see what happened.
No, this is not, I don't, we're not going to get into any.
No, just, the principal is not Teresa.
We're not going to talk about any legal issues that came up. We're not going to talk about any incidents that happened at the school. If you, if you have an issue, if you've gone through all the processes.
Yes.
With respect to the policies, and I don't believe you have, then at some point in time, you may.
I have copied the court order.
No, I don't, I don't really, listen, I don't, I may be an attorney, but the court order doesn't mean anything to me necessarily.
But the district has a copy of the court order.
You're going to look at your computer, Joe?
No.
Not going to look at your computer, not going to address it. But we want to leave a list, and ask that you refrain from speaking with respect to that, with respect to your kids, with respect to any staff, because that's where, I assume that's where we're going.
No, we're not. That's not where we're going. The only concern is that.
But again, you can, you can bring this up.
I have.
In your appropriate fashion by emailing.
I did.
Proper child.
I did.
I don't, I don't believe you did, Joe.
I gave Mr. Walker, I spoke, I spoke, and he said that, he should not comply with that.
Joe, is that any of your comment there?
No, I'm not done. I want to explain what happened, exactly.
Is it not an appropriate form for you to explain what happened? Joe?
We're not paying, you're not paying $3,000 legal fees.
Joe, I'm just telling you, it's not the appropriate.
You're not paying $3,000.
Do you have any other comments besides from that, aside from that?
As the board, we're going to be paying $3,000 legal fees.
I'll take that as a note. Okay, thank you.
So you, if the board is comfortable with that, then we can tell it to us what we've been this week.
Joe, I'm going to ask you to.
Okay, fine. If you want to pay $3,000, guys, legal fees, fine.
Respectfully, you could, thank you. I appreciate that.
So you don't want the court orders, Teresa, is that what's happening?
Does anybody else have any, any public comments? No, okay. So saying none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. I think we're done. Chair, ten votes, you deserve. Teresa, oh, now Teresa though. Boy, all in favor, signify by saying aye. I suppose, expressions, aye. She said it served you right, though. She said it served you right. Yeah? Okay then.